What do we, do we have somebody set up to speak?
I thought we...
Paul called me, said he was planning to come.
He's not showing up for her.
We're trying to put ourselves in help of the wonderful people here by ourselves.
She passed her...
She definitely isn't wrong.
Then everybody walked out.
She really does look...
I really don't...
I'll just tell you this, my doggy is a dog. Would you prefer...
That's justice.
If anyone want to help make tea, feel free to go and make tea. I don't know, I'm assuming, oh, that's better, yeah. Geez, they put this up to trick me. Joe, did you do this? I think you did this.
I moved it from the back of the room to the speaker, but not really standing there all the time.
I was gonna say something, but, you know... The tea was not on yet, so it's nice to have a meeting in this room. If anybody feel like they want to make hot tea in the middle of the meeting, please feel free to go in the office, make yourself hot tea, coffee. I don't have honey, you know, I don't grab water or what have you. Let's start the meeting. We'll start the meeting by a salute to the flag. Please join me in the allegiance to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag.
United States of America, to the republic which stands in the foundations under God, indivisible, liberate and justice for all.
So, guys, has been...
You on TV now?
Should we wait? Should we call them?
Do we go to them?
Is there a... They have this meeting on...
No, it wasn't. I don't know if it was. I don't know if it was on the original.
Yeah, that's...
Yeah, that I don't know.
LTC, LCT told me that we are actually on. I'm not quite sure why we don't see it on this TV screen, but he sees us as being on.
I'm here.
Stacy's there. So, maybe this TV is on, this TV might be only for the Zoom thing. We don't get to see ourselves, things like that. All right, Madam Secretary, roll call, please.
Ms. Thompson?
Here.
Mirchow?
Here.
Ms. Chun?
Here.
Mr. Rossi?
Here.
Ms. Dougherty?
Here.
Mr. Lay?
Yeah.
Ms. Martin?
Here.
Seven present.
Thank you. There's a lot of meeting going on to do the business of city. The chamber is being used by another committee. So, today we're meeting the school committee, meeting here in the mayor's reception room. Now go to, so this is almost like, just want to say one last thing. It's almost like a field day trip. We meet in a different location, so it's nice to shake things up a little bit. All right, we go to agenda number three, permission to enter. Any comment, questions by any members? Ms. Dougherty?
Motion to approve.
Second by Mr. Lay. Don't face the eye. Actually, this one need a roll call.
Ms. Thompson? Ms. Thompson?
Stacy? Yes, she's talking. Muted?
Maybe she's, she might be unmuted.
She is unmuted, I can see it.
Stacy, can you unmute yourself or do we have a controller where we can unmute on her behalf somewhere? Can be controlled from here anywhere, Mr. Superintendent?
Sorry, stop.
Okay, she's unmuted now.
And she's muted again.
Sorry, now go with technical difficulties.
Okay, so...
Okay, Ms. Thompson?
Yes.
Mirchow?
Yes.
Ms. Chun?
Yes.
Mr. Rossi?
Yes.
Ms. Dougherty?
Yes.
Mr. Lay?
Yes.
Ms. Martin? Six yeas, one absent.
Okay, we now go to unfinished business. These were the job posting that we did not get to complete during the last meeting. We're gonna go line item by line item by each job posting. When I read the specific job posting, if the, Mr. Superintendent administration would like to add any comment, please raise your hand, and if the committee member would like to have any comments or question, please let me know as well. For the first one is the lunch monitor. Any comments or question? Ms. Martin?
My first question was just to follow up on a question I had asked previously. If we've gotten the information on...
There isn't a... There isn't a full report on unemployment benefits, but of course, what would impact that is how long we fielded the position, the hours, and the percentage they're eligible for. I don't think there'd be a large impact with the lunch monitor, for example, but some of the bigger positions would have a larger impact.
Yeah, I mean, this is kind of a universal question I had asked about, just so we can be prepared as we're adding positions to understand what the repercussions would be next year if we do have to lay off, just so we can understand if we're paying a third of a salary every time we, every position we eliminate. I just think we need to be aware of what that could look like. So, if we could get that as soon as we possibly could, it's hard to make these decisions without that information.
Mr. Rossi?
Just in relation to Ms. Martin's comment, I know that there are parent liaisons that are being laid off, and they'll obviously collect unemployment, but then there's parent liaisons being added. So, just to be aware of that and the reasoning of why these parent liaisons being laid off or not invited back to their positions. I've received communications about that, but yet you're adding parent liaisons.
Mr. Rossi, is that a comment or a question directly to anyone that you want to comment back, or...
Well, I know that the parent liaison is in the job description, so maybe we can go further into it then. But just to, just to think about that in terms, I'll bring it back up, but where Ms. Martin was talking about unemployment, I figured it related. Thank you.
Any other comments or question?
I have one other question on the lunch monitor, just as an example. So, this is a part-time position. How, what are the, what is the benefits package attached to that? Is it calculated based on per hour, or...
There wouldn't be health insurance benefits because it's under 18.5.
But I mean, in term, I'm sorry, it should have been specific, like vacation time, sick time. Do they accrue those based on hours?
Those weren't worked into this offering, those sort of...
So, that's not in a union though, right?
No.
So, it would have to adhere to Massachusetts law?
For part-time hourly work, for, for example, like we're analogizing it to tutors.
So, just as another HR question that we should probably investigate. I mean, it's my understanding that the state requires sick time for all part-time positions. It can be calculated kind of based on the percentage of time, FTE percentage or whatever you want to call it, but it's required that, at the very least, sick time I know is required.
Any other comments or questions? Here none. Need a motion to approve and post the position of lunch monitor by Mr. Lay, second by Ms. Martin. Roll call, please.
Ms. Thompson?
Yes.
Mirchow?
Yes.
Ms. Chun?
Yes.
Mr. Rossi?
Yes.
Ms. Dougherty?
Yes.
Mr. Lay?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Seven yeas approved.
The next job posting is parent family advocate. Any comment or questions? Ms. Dougherty?
Thank you, Your Honor. I am, I'm very interested in making some improvements to the Family Resource Center. As you know, we had a bunch of issues in the last couple of years. I guess with this position, I'm wondering if we should take all of them together or do you want to just keep going in the order? I'm fine with that. We can just go in the order if you want.
It's up to the will of the body if we can continue this way.
Okay, so just so we realize, this is one of a number of positions
Right.
for the Family Resource Center. I think we need somebody at the front greeting people. I just, my big concern is why this person doesn't report to the Director of the Family Resource Center. It seems to me that that would be the logical person that you're reporting to is you're part of the Family Resource Center team. And this particular position, Director of Family Leadership Institute, I'm not aware that we move forward on this position. There was a subcommittee scheduled that got canceled. I believe Mr. Rossi is the chair of that subcommittee. So, they never met to discuss this position or this Director of Family Leadership Institute. I think it's premature to move forward with this, especially when we know that we have over 300, I forget the exact number, but we did get a report at the last meeting, new positions that again, we have to worry about potential layoffs. So, I would direct that through you, Your Honor, to anyone in the administration who wants to answer why the family advocate at the Family Resource Center is not reporting to the director, and rather to a position that hasn't been filled for an institute that hasn't been thought of.
Mr. Superintendent?
Okay, Mr. Mayor, school committee members.
You gotta speak up, lady.
Okay. So, one of the challenges we had with that front position is that that's the first person that families come to for everything, anytime you walk through the building. And so, reporting to a broader position rather than just school assignment would enable the person to be connected to all of the different offices and different family engagement and advocacy work. But being situated there at the Family Resource Center, many people likely will be coming for school assignment services, so that will be a critical position supporting the flow of families for the Family Resource Center. However, questions come for transportation, for, you know, for testing, for special education, for any, any services a family might need. So, that's why it's not just a narrow support. It really is to be able to respond to any, any question and just be a part of a broader team. It could report to the Family Resource Center, but in the event that, that we do have a position approved for family leadership, which is a little broader, it would strategically work better with the family leadership, but ultimately, it is a team, and the entire team does fall under the Equity Office, so I would expect everyone to be fully on board with, with supporting the Family Resource Center as well as all family services.
Sure. Ms. Dougherty?
All right, thank you for that response. I just want to follow up and say I absolutely support having this front row position, and I think we're going to be looking at a lot of improvements around training at the Family Resource Center and cross-training, but I would not be able to support it if it doesn't report to the director. It just, it doesn't make sense to me at this time. And as I said, I don't think we fully fleshed out the whole Family Leadership Institute. I really don't want to go spreading ourselves too thin when we know. I mean, I got, I had parents calling me crying during the pandemic about their frustration with getting the support at the Family Resource Center. I want the focus to be on making the improvements. And I looked at the audit, which, you know, we haven't discussed it yet because we haven't reported back on that subcommittee. It didn't say, it said this position, but it didn't say that it should be reporting to somebody else. Let's focus on getting the resources, the technical tools, the training that we need at the Family Resource Center, because that really is the first point of engagement for all our families. If they have a good experience there, it's going to impact their child's entry and continued involvement for the family in the local public schools. And I think that the person at that front desk can do that, you know, transfer to transportation. They're down there as well, and they've always, the two departments have always worked closely. So, for me, this is a, it's an important point. Thank you.
Any other comments or question? Ms. Martin?
Thank you very much. I absolutely agree with Ms. Dougherty's thoughts on this. In terms of the Director of Family Leadership, I mean, and again, I know we're still discussing that position, but I had a very different sense of what that position was. So, it seems to me that this activity, this position absolutely belongs in the Family Resource Center. And I, you know, I just think that makes the most sense in terms of how they're going to be deployed. I mean, quite literally in that, in that center. My only other recommendation or question, I guess, was on number 10 in the specific duties and responsibilities. Number 10 talks about supporting the development distribution of multilingual communication tools, which obviously is going to be a critical part of this. I know we very carefully avoid using the word translate, that we don't want these positions to be just translators because we have other resources and we rely on other kind of mechanisms for that. And I make this, this wouldn't hold up the moving forward for me, but just as a, something to keep in mind, including it as a preferred skill, I think makes sense. I mean, I do think that there could be times when we want a staff person who has, you know, where, where using the bilingual status as a preferred qualification, having that as one of the preferred duties, I think also makes sense that we can, you know, kind of, as we're bringing people in with this really valuable skill, be able to use it in multiple ways. And by leaving it out entirely, it means that, you know, you really couldn't ask someone to do that, even if it kind of made sense within their regular job duties. So, that's, I guess, more of a HR comment than anything else, but just giving ourselves as much latitude as we can as we create these positions.
Mr. Rossi?
Thank you. I love this position that it's going to be built in, but a lot of it is huge. And I think that really needs to be looked at because within this, I see about four positions because it's so broad. My first question is, who is the Director of the Family Leadership Institute now?
Mr. Superintendent?
So the Family Leadership Institute is a, is part of our strategy going forward. So that position is not yet filled or created. So I believe the edit recommended by the committee is to change the word Leadership Institute to Resource Center. That would be Rebecca, Dr. Rebecca Duda.
And my second part of the question is, in the subcommittees, does it stand as it is who's in the subcommittees? Because I know Ms. Doherty felt very strongly too, that she has always been a part of this subcommittee. And so, all right, because I know that was the reason that we had canceled the last meeting also. So I just want to make sure, going forward, I'm new to this, and I really, I want to do things right, but it was canceled because of, so, I mean, I knew. I mean, I just need guidance, I guess. I'm asking for guidance. And who is on the subcommittee? Is it as it stands or is it different? And if it's as it stands, then the meeting should have happened and it was canceled because of a miscommunication. And I don't mean for it to be canceled, but I'm very confused in my own self. So if you could give some clarification, Mayor Chow, as to the subcommittees, just for my own advice.
Sure. Good question. I don't want this to be a permanent answer to it, but as far as I have reviewed the subcommittee so far, it remained the same except for the, the policy subcommittee, which we may adjust to it. We're gonna have that to reflect, lack of a better word, the traditional policy subcommittee with a couple of ad word to describe that subcommittee. So as far as, as of right now, I have to review it again and have to discuss that with, you know, you, the members as well. But as of right now, the subcommittees, but the name of it stays the same. There might be some movement among the members, which has not been finalized yet. But as far as the subcommittees, the names remain the same except for the policy subcommittee.
Thank you for that clarification. And I just, I, I would just like to say, to move forward, we need to keep meetings. And it's just very confusing being new. And having that, you know, I, I didn't know it should be, and I was told it should be canceled. So I would like to move forward with this. And I would, I guess I would like to also make a motion to have a family subcommittee meeting with the members that are posted, I guess, and make a sure that happens, because nothing can really move forward with this until we have a subcommittee meeting.
Okay. All right. I, I was just been informed that it was, it was scheduled at one point already. So we just need to reschedule that. Okay. We just, if that's okay with you. Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Ms. Doherty?
I just have one quick question, and it, it might just be a housekeeping issue. So I noticed that the, the family advocate position is a 12-month position, and it says 227 days. But then the next bilingual family liaison position, that's listed as a 12-month position, but it says 260 days. So I wonder if there's clarification on what is a 12-month position? Is it 227 or 260? And why, or if it's intentional that there's a difference?
Mr. Superintendent?
So the 260-day positions, those are the, for example, I'm 260, Ms. Desmond, I think was the first 260 position. Those include approximately 28 days of vacation. So if you're backing out all that time, it almost goes back towards the bilingual parent liaison work year. And those generally are working traditionally oriented with the schools. So their work years have been shorter than the 260.
The parent liaison one is the one that's listed at 260. The family advocate is listed at 227.
Oh, so that.
It's the exact opposite of what you said.
This bilingual parent liaison has.
Do you have a question on the family advocate position?
Has 260 because they have duties at central office outside of the school year. So in the last two or three years, there have been several bilingual parent liaisons that have the 260-day work year because they're going and working with FRC or during the summertime.
I'm sorry, are we talking about the part-time? So, so why?
Why wouldn't the family advocate also be, I think, 12 months is 260 days?
Through Mr. Superintendent to Mr. Hall, the difference in the days, I think you might have, I might have, you might have answered it. I might have missed it. But just for clarification, was this a, a union negotiation?
No, no, Mayor.
Okay.
It's also aligned with what the salary is to match up with other positions as well.
Okay. Good. Ms. Doherty, you all set?
There's no really, and, and, because the, yeah, I'd be confused by that too. Again, we've, I had asked the question regarding vacation day for part-time positions and was told they don't get them.
The.
So these four part-time bilingual family liaison?
So if they're over 18 hours per week, they would get benefits. If you're not, if you're a tutor, for example, you would get one hour of sick time, for example, for every 30 hours, I believe, up to a certain cap for a year in regards to that question.
But there's no vacation equivalent?
No.
Okay.
Okay. I think I'm going to call Ms. Thompson first. She's been raising her hand over there. Ms. Thompson?
Hi, I'm just curious, and I might have been to something that was left out, but I noticed in the, in the actual qualification, it did say bilingual and bilingual, but it did not speak to the ability to work with, or familiarity with working with diverse groups and, that's kind of a key component of that particular position. So I was just curious how to do it not being pregnant qualifications. Thank you.
Okay. What's that? Mr. Superintendent, I think you might bat off with the, the other microphone. Yeah.
We can, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Superintendent, yeah.
We can add that to the, to the preferred with bilingualism. Certainly that we can add that. There is a, if the committee would like us to give an analysis of, we do have multiple schedules across 10, 11, 12-month employees in terms of different days as well. So we work across multiple salary schedules. So what the HR office does in analysis, this goes to the comparable salary schedules and looks across with what the day requirements are. We can provide that analysis to the committee as well, if that be the desire of the committee. We could certainly provide for you. We have a number of individuals that are on, I want to say 182, 196, 227, 260. Are those the broad four categories? Dr. Hall? So we can provide a, an analysis of who fits into which of those categories that the committee desires. For purposes here, we can just put 12 months if that's causing confusion for the committee and just take off the days.
Okay. Ms. Doherty?
Thank you. I think that's an excellent solution. If we just say 12-month position, don't specify the days till we figure out the reasoning and what the days are going to be. Change it to report to the Director of the Family Resource Center, add familiarity with working with diverse groups, and add bilingual, making it a preferred skill. I would be set to make a motion to approve.
Ms. Thompson, go ahead. Second by Ms. Tom. So Ms. Doherty, your, your motion was to, your motion to, to approve both the parent family advocate and the bilingual parent liaison?
No, I want to talk about that separately.
Okay.
And I want to.
You were referring to the bilingual in, in your explanation.
If I could just make a correction to my motion.
Sure.
The actual title is Coordinator of the Family Resource Center. That would be the person that this person reports to.
So that would be a change in the job description?
Yes, we're adding familiarity with working with diverse groups. We're adding translation as a preferred skill. And we're just saying that it's a 12-month position. We're not going to specify the days till we have an analysis. I think we need to really be consistent with the days. And there should be a thinking behind it.
Okay. So that would be the complete motion. I just, for clarity, if Madam Secretary, just for the public watching, could you, especially can, read the, the motion for us? Or maybe you can, you, you'll say it again so that way she could, like, do you have it? Okay. Good. If you could do that. Okay. Oh, yeah. I, I forget.
Approve and post the parent family advocate position with, with the understanding they'll report to the Family Resource Coordinator, they'll be working with diverse groups, translation in a preferred skill, as a preferred skill, and be a 12-month position.
Motion by Ms. Doherty, second by Ms. Thompson. Madam Secretary, roll call, please.
Ms. Thompson? Mia Chow? Ms. Chun? Mr. Rossi?
Yes.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Mr. Lay?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Seven yeas approved.
The next job to be posted is the position of the bilingual parent liaison for part-time. Any comment? Ms. Chun?
I have a question. So I know that we have one parent liaison that speaks Kamai, right?
Mr. Superintendent?
Yes, that's correct.
On here, it says that bilingual capability, preferred Spanish, Portuguese. Are we looking for, to hire another Kamai parent liaison? Or we're just focusing on just hiring Spanish and Portuguese-speaking parent liaison?
So the, the current trend in population is that our, our increase in, in families who don't speak English are Spanish speakers and Portuguese speakers. Over the past year, we have been monitoring our Kamai-speaking community and the needs for interpretation. And as you mentioned, we do have, we actually have two speakers of Kamai in the office, although I think primarily one has been the predominant person, you know, serving the office. But in monitoring the past year of the families who are coming in, the, you know, every month I've given a report on newcomer families. And you'll see in the breakdown that our high incidence languages are Spanish and Portuguese. Even though our numbers of Kamai speakers remain high, if we look at, at the growth trend, it's, it's kind of leveling. And the Spanish and, and Portuguese speakers are increasing.
Mr. Lay?
Just, just add to that, I don't see it described here. Those four positions, that basically in the central office, they're not going to school site or anything, right?
So these positions are specifically for the Family Resource Center. So in the past year, our, our other bilingual family liaisons have been down there for most of their time. And, and they've also had to, they've also been present at schools as well as after-hours community sessions and weekends. And so we've learned that there's a great need to be in the Family Resource Center, but we also have a great need in our schools and in the community. So we, we'd like our current liaisons to be able to fulfill the vision for their work, which was not to be in the Family Resource Center most of their time. So in order for that to happen, we have to backfill the position, or not backfill, but we have to, you know, fill the position moving forward.
Ms. Mon?
Just a quick comment, really. I recognize that a lot of these job descriptions are kind of Frankenstein from other things that have existed and, and all that. Like, I for one don't know what dissemination skills are. And, and so if we could, there's language in the previous job description that I think is more, again, that number 10, I think it was, that says that more clearly. So just, just in terms of, again, consistency. Thank you.
Mr. Rossi, and then Ms. Doherty. Mr. Rossi?
The only question I have is that we're tracking where our parent liaisons are leaving, asking to be the, asking to leave their positions, and where we're putting new parent liaisons, so that we have a tracking system so we know. Because like I said earlier, there are parent liaisons that are being asked to leave or laid off and will be collecting unemployment. So if we have a tracking, a tracking system, it would be helpful so that we know who's going, who's leaving where, who's collecting unemployment, who maybe just quit on their own, and where we're replacing that parent liaison, because there are four of them listed here. Thank you.
Ms. Doherty?
Thank you. First off, I want to say I've heard really good things about the bilingual parent liaisons and the supports that they've provided at the Family Resource Center. Definitely is something we need. I guess my question is more, I don't understand how they really fit in at the school-based part or the central office part. I'm also aware that the family lead, the family liaison lead, the bilingual family, he happened to go to school with my daughter, that he is leaving and going to grad school. So we have this lead position that's going to be open. And while I, I understand the benefit of having them at the Family Resource Center, I'd like, if you could explain to me what their role is spread out throughout the district. I'm just wondering, because they've done such an excellent job at the Family Resource Center, why they don't just stay at the Family Resource Center instead of adding newcomers or, you know, bringing new people in, maybe just the one that's leaving, if there's other ones leaving. I just like an understanding of what their, the other side of their role is. Because my understanding is every school is able to have with the student, fair student funding approach to the budget, they're able to add staff that they feel are needed, that they're going to have there when they need them, as opposed to when they can get a piece of a parent liaison that's really primarily at the Family Resource Center. So if someone could address that issue, and I do have a follow-up to that. Thank you.
Mr. Superintendent?
So there is tremendous work at the school buildings. And you're right, that the schools do have the option of, of selecting the position or not. Part of what we need to really study is how our, our liaisons can support in schools and whether we do need to have more positions in the school buildings. Our liaisons do get called to support student meetings, behavioral meetings. You know, when a family doesn't understand a process at the school building, they get called in. The liaisons have supported family affinity groups at the school buildings, language affinity groups, back-to-school events. Anytime that we have centralized, centralized sessions, like the superintendent's welcome-back sessions, the liaisons then replicate these sessions for their communities. So they've really been recreating a lot of the information that's happening in English into, into their respective languages. And it's not just, do you speak the language, but are you a part of the community? And so they've been balancing that along with supporting families in the Family Resource Center. They have far exceeded the number of hours, you know, from an eight to four, and they've happily done it. It's not sustainable. It's not sustainable. But because they care very deeply about the work, they have been incredibly flexible, on-call on the weekends even, and just happily, happily supporting. So I think next year, if we can pull them away from the Family Resource Center to building, you know, building programming in schools and really understanding how, what the needs in the schools are, I think when we go through next year's process, we can really get to the bottom of where do we need, you know? we can really get to the bottom of where do we need, um, you know, school-specific positions versus supports coming from central. You know, it's challenging because we have, you know, almost 30% English learners in our district. And the high-incidence languages are Spanish, Portuguese, and Kamai, but like I men- mentioned, Spanish and Portuguese especially. Um, we also have a Swahili-French speaker who also supports with the African diaspora. And so, um, it's, you know, it's it's tough to have one position, right? If you're if you're one school and you get to choose one position and you have to serve three high, high-incidence languages, you know, you just choose one. So we really have to figure out how do we maybe cluster, you know, family liaisons, but one person unless you speak Spanish and Portuguese, um, which happens, but it's, it is rare, we are going to continue to have to provide services centrally.
If I could just follow up on that, I think you've made a very compelling case of the role they would play district-wide. Um, so I'm I'm open to leaving that as it is, and I guess maybe we will be looking at expanding those hours next year if we have the funding. So back to this position, again, I'm going to say with my same concern with the advocate role, that whoever is working at the Family Resource Center, whoever is assigned there, should be reporting to the coordinator. Because in terms of being, this was one of the complaints that I heard from parents, that if you don't, if if they don't know the schedule to say to a parent, you know, this is when our Spanish speaker will be here to help you. And I think without having the coordinator coordinating the staff, and we used to, and I know we lost it through the pandemic, we used to have hours where the Family Resource Center was open, uh, like on a Thursday evening and they would leave early, like City Hall did during the summer. That was a huge benefit for our families. Not everybody can take time off from work. And I know we're moving towards doing everything online and all that, but there are families that need that support. So with the ones, I'm fine with your keeping your district ones that are going to be out of central, but with the ones that are at the Family Resource Center, I think they should be reporting to the coordinator so that that person has control over the schedule. We can communicate that to our families and be much more efficient in our delivery of service. So that would be something that I would put forward. Thank you.
Are you putting forward as as a motion, Ms. Doherty?
Um, I'm I'm open to hear what are the people's concerns are, but yes, I, that would make it comfortable for me. And the 12-month position, not saying the hours, the days until we have that straightened out.
Okay, sure. Before we present that, we go to Mr. Lay.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. Uh, have, for having been to the Family Resource Center for a few times, I realize that the Portuguese and Spanish speaking is greatly needed. So I'm glad to see that these positions are available. And, um, I also want to point out a few things that I learned from the staff is that, um, you know, we we are looking for qualified uh, people to work. Uh, but at the same time, uh, not too many people want to work part-time because they, in order to work here, they have to leave their jobs from somewhere. And part-time, sometimes, uh, many of them don't think that's worked out for them. So, uh, we have four positions. I don't know if you, if we could make it to full-time instead, just that way. But I'm I'm not, I'm not challenging you at all. I'm just, um, giving you, giving you the information that what I have learned from going to the Family Resources Center.
Mr. Superintendent, you want to respond to that?
So I think that's, that is a great point. Um, we are looking to post, if we don't get applicants, um, that is something that we would consider. Um, you know, I always appreciate having full-time staff as well, knowing the flexibility. That's where it starts to get tricky is, um, you know, having, having the flexible hours, um, you know, to be able to fully serve the the Family Resource Center. You know, if if we have to expand, like, home visits, right? You know, one of, one thing you see in my reports often is missing documents. And if, um, if one of the solutions is to conduct home visits, that's taking you outside of the building, right? Um, home visits, you know, in many other districts, they've been conducted before the school day starts or after the school day ends. And so having that kind of flexibility, when you have part-time positions, you're able to flex more easily than with a full-time position. But I think that if we see that we're not getting the um, volume of applicants and we're not happy with the quality of applicants, I think that we wouldn't just fill, um, the position and we would consider a full-time position.
Okay, so, um, Ms. Phillips, otherwise, I understand it's so current, we're going to post as part-time now, but if there was no qualified pool of candidate, then we can come back to reconsider making to a full-time posting instead. Okay. Um, any other comments or questions before we take up? Ms. Doherty, consideration, if you want to make that into a motion or not? Okay, I don't know. No other people talking? Ms. Ms. Doherty, do you want to?
I would.
Okay.
Um, I would move forward to, um, post these positions, um, with one change that they report to the coordinator of the Family Resource Center. And with the caveat that if you don't get candidate, you come back and we can look at, maybe expanding the hours.
Mr. Superintendent?
Yeah, thank you. Uh, so I would, I would encourage that we leave the bilingual family liaison team to operate as a team. Certainly, the location here and there's going to be cross-functional work, but the team of bilingual family liaisons work all the way across all of our diverse communities, as well as our diverse community representative bodies, including community centers, community organizations. So involvement within that team as well as if somebody is out at any particular time, it's the team of bilingual liaisons that cover for one another. So the last, uh, change in reporting lines makes sense. So changing the, uh, family advocate to report to the, uh, Family Resource Center. There, here, I would say there's intentionality to have them report to the bilingual family liaison lead. Uh, that's one team that operates that does do a significant amount of, uh, professional collaboration that I I think would benefit these positions. So I would just give that to the committee. That's, that's the intentionality of that reporting line. And I would give that back to you as you consider the motion. Thank you.
Ms. Doherty?
That's the position that's being vacated, though, correct? So you'd be looking to hire somebody in that role. And then is there a way to do a cross-connection so that there is communication and understanding around scheduling? I mean, because I think that's really where the concern comes in. If the person operate, if all these four bilingual new staff operate as part of another team, I can see Dr. Boyd's point with that, with another supervisor that's in a different department, where is the understanding about scheduling and that I think is important for the Family Resource Center to be a, you know, effective resource for our families? If you could address that, Dr. Boyd, thank you.
Mr. Superintendent?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So both of those positions report directly to Ms. Phillips. So it's it's cross-collaboration. They're within the Office of Educational Equity and Community Empowerment. So the Family Resource Center is a division of that office as well as our bilingual family community outreach. So the cross-collaboration within, that occurs under the direction of Ms. Phillips. So here, you wouldn't be moving over offices. It's it's part of the Office of Educational Equity and Community Empowerment. So I think that cross-pollination, avoidance of siloing, I don't think that concern exists, and it's up to Ms. Phillips to ensure that it does not. She's accountable for that.
Ms. Ms. Doherty?
So, uh, Ms. Phillips, I think it has been an issue in the past, so can you make a commitment here tonight that the new bilingual family liaisons that will be under this new lead that you're going to need to hire will be working closely through you to coordinate that we can have publicized hours so our families can know, if you need someone who's Portuguese-speaking to help you with this process, this is when they'll be, because I think it it is going to increase your options for flexibility to have four more people on that team. But I want that sense that it is going to be clearly specified and communicated to our families when this resource will be available. So could you make that commitment to me? Thank you. So I would move to accept this unless somebody has anything else.
Okay, um, are we, uh, thank you for that, Ms. Ms. Doherty. Are we going for the, everything going to be automatic, a 12-month language for each of the post position like we did the the last one? Move to accept this with the understanding that the number of, you know, we're not talking about the number of days, we're talking about just 12 months period, period. Okay. All right. So this really, this really, there's really no new motion on the floor then? We just, you just move to accept as it is, correct?
No, we are going to stay with the, just the 12 months, not the number for all of those.
Correct, correct.
Until we get them.
Okay, so that that was the one motion that covers all the positions?
We'll include it in this one.
Okay, wonderful. I see. Okay, wonderful. All right. So neither, that was, neither motion, that was by Ms. Doherty, second by Ms. Martin, roll call, please.
Ms. Thompson?
Yes.
Mia Chow?
Yes.
Ms. Chun?
Yes.
Mr. Rossi?
Yes.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Mr. Lay?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Seven yeas approved.
The next position is the Community Schools Program Manager. And I understand that there is a registered speaker, no more? There's no registered speaker? Any comments or question by committee members or the administration? Ms. Martin?
Could I just get a a description of, um, the position, exactly what it will be covering? Is it a single school coordinator? Is it coordinating the program? My understanding is this was the Renaissance schools, correct? So, okay.
Mr. Superintendent?
Yes, thank you. Thank you for bearing with me with the microphone. Uh, so yes, this is a UTL-affiliated position. Um, this would be a school-based, uh, community schools manager. We have currently assigned them, uh, to our Renaissance schools. That's the plan with our community school rollout, that they'll be at our Renaissance schools. So you'll see here the number here for one per Renaissance network. These are school-based positions that are UTL-affiliated. So everything within this has been discussed and negotiated with UTL.
So the UTL, it wouldn't be, you would be?
So the partnership we have with community schools is UTL. It's an, uh, AFT National has done a significant amount of work around community schools. So we have been working with UTL and this position is part of the outgrowth of that work.
And so it's a total of how many positions we'll be filling? Four, six?
Six.
Six.
Seven. Get seven Renaissance schools, one for you.
One's at the high school?
Correct.
You have something, Ms. Martin? Ms. Doherty?
Uh, thank you, Your Honor. So I believe we have this position already, right? We have a community schools program person. Uh, because I thought we, I remember asking, it's not affiliated, right? So how is this different from that position?
Those are, these are school-based positions. So the other is a district-wide to build out and help us to scale up the model. So this is the first step in that, which is at our Renaissance schools. The, uh, our hope is to build out a model that we can bring back to you to scale up across the district or certainly in more schools as we see the need. Uh, this, we've had multiple requests across the district. We believe the prudent step is to start with our Renaissance network and then go from there, uh, in terms of scaling up. The position that you're referring to, Ms. Doherty, is our district-wide, system-wide position that works on our community schools partnerships across the city. These would be school-specific.
So, sorry.
Ms. Doherty, got it, Ms. Doherty?
One more question with that. So my understanding, and I'm, I might not be remembering it correctly because it was when we discussed it last year, this role was really about re-engaging kids, right? It's not that. It's not the focus of it, of?
Well, in some ways, all of our our work is around that. So you're referring to the Student Resource Center and our drop, uh, our alternative programming and student outreach liaisons. These positions are in, in order to enable us to run programming at our schools in non-traditional hours. So our schools will be opened, uh, early morning to late evenings, depending on the needs of the community and the partnerships that are there. So this pro, this position is not only around coordinating and supporting those partnerships in conjunction with our system-wide model, but also to actually be physically there to support the programming while students are and families are accessing them. So you need actually the physical supervision.
So that, if I could just, so that's exactly where I was going with it, because I don't understand, it should be a 12-month position, not a school-based position, right?
It's accounted for in there. However, that has to be paid for as the per diem and outside of the contract hour. So you have it accounted for within the position. You'll see it stipulated, uh, you'll see it stipulated in terms of employment. So that's how, so with affiliated positions, we've got to make sure that we negotiate these through. So this is the affiliated position. Now, what you have here is you have flexibility with how the days and hours are scheduled. So you'll, so this works as part of the overall school team, and they'll be working to schedule these individuals at times when the principal and the assistant superintendent, if it's the high school, it's a larger team, so it makes sure that we can supplement those hours and those needs to coordinate all of the services for kids. So it works to supplement and support. Uh, but yes, you'll see that added in the terms of employment. So they have to work a set contract and then every, then if there's additional days beyond that. But there is flexibility that has been negotiated within UTL so that those days are, look a little different.
And that, I'm sorry, and that would be clearly expressed to any candidates, that it's, it's not a, you're done on June 20th and you don't come back till August, right? That's going to be part of the whole expectation with anyone taking this position?
I'm here with you, the negotiation, terms of negotiations. You'll see it in the employment, uh, terms of employment section.
What was discussed with the union, the story that negotiated was that the alternative hours to accommodate the union meetings, which could create a scheduling, show it up at 11:00 a.m., depending upon the day, if you stay until five, for example. And then additionally, in order to match the UTL partnership, we needed extra days, some, to get ready. The UTL work here and salary schedule, just, um, is a portion of the, um, UTL.
Ms. Doherty, you have something? Mr. Rossi?
Just to clarify, so we're going to have two community manager positions now, one for the district and then one for school-based to really work within the schools. Is that correct?
There's seven of them. I'm sorry I missed that part. I I retract my question.
No other comments or or question? Need a motion to approve and post?
I have a question, I'm sorry.
Okay, yeah, I'm I'm sorry to, uh, Ms. Thompson, you're on Zoom. It's, I don't see, is there like a, is there, Ms. Thompson, is, Ms. Thompson, is there a button on your phone or computer that has the, raised the hand when you want to speak? Is there a button like that so we can see that for next time?
Absolutely, will do.
Okay, go ahead, Ms. Thompson.
My question is, what types of, there's, I think it's like the, maybe the step to pull it down, and it says that this person is going to be skilled in data analysis as well as effective data reporting. I'm just curious, what types of data this person is going to be doing? Because I do know that, uh, Mr. Scanner did talk about having kind of relationship with Givest Global and getting a lot of our data analytics handled that way. So is this going to be budget-centric data analysis, what type, if you can clarify that?
Mr. Superintendent?
Thank you. Uh, I think the easiest way, uh, Mr. Mayor, through you to committee member Thompson, might be with just a, an example of a community partnership that was developed based on data that then was, um, and how that would work at the school level versus with the centralized coordination. So many of you are familiar with a new mentoring program that we established, uh, with Billy's Barber Shop, who supported, um, mentoring of 12 students at the high school who weren't connecting with the traditional mentors and counseling program at the high school, but were founding, finding through an alternative mentorship program significant success. Identifying first, the need for that program, that came out of our Lowell Student Advisory Council, that there was a need for additional mentoring services. The next step then is, uh, our community school manager, who in this case was the district-wide manager, took that database need, then did a, a landscape analysis across the community of who could meet that need, how it could be met, working with the high school then to identify students who could benefit, and then taking the next step to actually, uh, travel with the students, supervise the students, and coordinate the partnership, uh, everything from procurement to implementation. So the data in that case came out of, uh, student focus groups, for lack of a better, better term. So it can be, um, survey-based data, could be observational, experiential data, or it could be, as you were referencing, outcome-based data that might come out of the expanded performance management work that we're looking to do. The outcome data, the quantitative data, is what we're looking to partner with, uh, UMass Lowell largely on. It's through the Performance Management Office. There's a multitude of other data points, however, that these particular positions could coordinate through observation, through student fee- could coordinate through observation, through student feedback, and through local surveys. If that answers your question, Madam Committee Member.
It does, thank you very much.
Okay, Ms. Chun?
Sorry, I was just looking at the per diem. So will this position be in terms of health and benefits and all that stuff? Will they be getting that as well? Because it's per diem.
The Community Schools Program Manager will be compensated almost exactly like a teacher pursuant to their contract, so if we pay, if we require them to work an extra day, that's when they would get the per diem. Otherwise, you would follow the salary chart for a teacher, apply whether or not you had a master's and your years of service as a teacher. We anticipate some veteran teachers will want to participate with this job in these schools, who may know a lot of community members, and that's where we think we'll get the most applicants from.
Okay. A motion to approve and post the position by Ms. Chun, second by Mr. Rossi, roll call
Ms. Thompson?
Yes.
Mia Chow?
Yes.
Ms. Chun?
Yes.
Mr. Rossi?
Yes.
Ms. Starriedy?
Yes.
Mr. Lay?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Seven yeas approved.
The next position is the Academic Chair, Health and Wellness. Any comment or question? Ms. Mon?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was curious about the certification, where it's listed as either physical education or health, and this seems to me exclusively a health position now, kind of purposely?
I'm gonna pass it over so Ms., Dr. Hall can share, however, I, you bring up a good point for reminder for the rest of the committee. This was part of the committee's work last year's budget, where we created the additional PE department chair. So this is, now that we have an individual within the position, making the position more robust, so that we can better serve the community, the school district, and our staff. This has been, this is a second step within that job description itself. This actual position, I believe Dr. Hall is filled, is, is currently filled. Dr. Hall, if you have something to add?
So, so basically, this will do all the duties that it was previously doing, which was supervising all the PE teachers and providing the ability to teach up to three courses, but also we're adding in supervising the health department teachers to more move it towards the number of teachers that the other department chairs are supervising or evaluating within their realms. So this moves the number of subject areas or teachers more closer to those other department
So we created the Athletic Director, the Physical Education Chair, and now the Health Chair? Or is this the same thing? Okay, so it's two positions, not three? The Athletic Director, and then, look at you, Ms. Desmond. Okay. That's fine. So, and this is reporting directly to the head of school?
Yes.
So the conversations we had regarding the Associate Head of School, and this will obviously come up in other places, being the evaluating person, the person who would be doing the evaluations, as I understand it, for the chairs, is that still the case?
So in, in the high school, much like the other schools, they, all of our job descriptions typically report directly to the principal. The principal can designate the assistant principal, or in the case of the high school, we have a unique structure in that they have almost the delegate of authority to the secondary principal, which is the Associate Head of School. So it would work in that same relationship. For job description purposes, we put the head of school, but it's understood that it can be delegated by the head of school to the Associate Head of School.
And the current plan would be?
I don't have that on the top of my head, I don't know.
In terms of who will be evaluating these chair positions? Would it be the head of school, or would it be the Associate Head of School?
To try to avoid passing the microphone around the table, the answer I think was both, both and, either or, they have flexibility within. You're saying both and? Ms. Desmond, or do you want to give them that report? Both and, or both? Thank you. Very difficult with the microphone for those watching in the community here.
Okay, Ms. Mon, you all set? All right, I see Ms. Thompson's hand is raised on Zoom, Ms. Thompson?
It is indeed. I'm a good student. So two quick questions. One of them is, again, and I know this is nippy, but it's important for me, it does not say experience in a multicultural or diverse, and I get that you may look for people come all over, but I think that should be something that's preferred, or even if it's not required. And then the other thing was, one, I think on number four of their performance responsibilities, it says curriculum planning assessment. I'm just curious, where the, where responsibility or offices as far as keeping and wearing the curriculum card? Because I know there has to be a lot of curriculum development done, just because of where we want to bring the curriculum, so I was just curious where that falls, and if that's their responsibility, how that could change.
Mr. Superintendent?
Yeah, I couldn't hear either.
So within the Office of Teaching and Learning, we have curriculum coordinators for the main subject areas, science, social studies, ELA, math, and those department chairs are K to 12, and so, or coordinators are K to 12. The high school department chairs work specifically with the teachers at the high school in their departments. So science, social studies, ELA, math, and now health and phys ed would be with this position, although they work with those teachers very specifically on curriculum development and coordination. They also align with our curriculum coordinators to ensure that their standards are being
Ms. Thompson, are you all set?
I'm all set, I don't know with that really, because I do know that there are requirements or mandates through the statement, I think that we're past that point. I think we're trying to be progressive, so I'm just curious as to what maybe thoughts, and maybe that's not for this conversation, but I'm just curious as to what thoughts have been thought about being progressive in the changes that we need to make in our curriculum. Thank you.
Ms. Dory?
Thank you, Your Honor. So I, I just need some clarification, I was confused by the answers to Ms. Martin's question. I know we did the Athletic Director separate from the PE Chair. This is a third administrative, no. So this position is going to be the Academic Department Chair for PE and Health and Wellness. So why doesn't it say that in the job description? And then to follow up on that, did you say the position is already filled, so we're not getting, giving permission to post it?
No, this is an update to the job description that was negotiated with the, with the UTL. So there's, the permission to post is a language that's familiar with the committee, but the policy is that the job descriptions are all approved by, by the committee. So this is an update to that. Are you suggesting that the, that physical education is not, not within the job description? I'm trying to understand.
It's not on the title.
Oh, that's, okay, so within health and wellness, physical education, health classes, and all is typically assumed within health and wellness? So that's, that's the reason for the title, physical education is part of the health and wellness curriculum.
So maybe we could just add it, because it was confusing. We had a Chair of Physical Education, and now this sounds like a different role, that's all.
We could certainly, so to remind the committee, we can take back any suggestions. I believe all the rest, the remainder of the job descriptions are negotiated with the representative bargaining unit, so we would have to take it back and make a suggestion back. I would, if none of the, if we could make sure that we clarify the motions to know what authority we have, so there are possibilities that the bargaining units might not be receptive to the suggestions. If they're not, I would still like to proceed with them, otherwise we would have to bring them back to you on the 13th. So I can bring it to the, I can bring it to the bargaining unit, I just can't speak on their behalf as to what they're going to accept, or what they might come back with. Sometimes it sounds simple, and I just don't want to get out in front of myself here.
Sure, so would it be okay, Ms. Dory, to approve this, but requesting as a superintendent to see if they could add PE to that? If it's doable, he'll do it, if not, that's fine, it'll still be approved as, as is.
Right, I don't see why they would have a problem with that, but it is, you know, it is more accurate. But if we could do that, and also add Ms. Thompson's point about where, you know, I mean, I realize the position is filled, but just for the record, that in the job description, we're looking for people that have experienced multicultural and diverse communities, that, that would be a strong selling point, given who we are as a district.
None of the suggestions are unreasonable, I just wanted to make sure that we give a courtesy to our unions by stipulating what the role is here, so we can certainly bring it back.
If you get those things, they're okay, I don't think you need to bring it back. If they're okay with adding PE to the title, right?
Sure, because this is a request, and if it's doable, right?
Oh, if they're not okay with it, does he need to bring it back?
Yeah, because we're approving it, we want to.
We're gonna approve it, just try for that, but I'm, I'm okay with that.
Ms. Dory, you all set?
I am, thank you.
Ms. Mon?
And this is again, just a fine point, not to be taken on to this kind of round of conversation, but moving forward, just because the Chair, Academic Department Chair description is something we use over and over again. I know this is based in history, but, you know, we, almost every, or at least the majority of these performance responsibilities begin with the word assist, and that indicates that it's someone else's job, and that this person is assisting with it, when I do think that responsible for is a more accurate way of describing it. Again, this is historical, I understand it, sorry. This would be a nice to have the next time we have this conversation in updating these chair positions. I just think this is an outmoded way of kind of communicating the actual responsibilities for this position.
Okay.
Had to get that off my chest.
Sure. And now the comments or questions? Here none, need a motion to approve and post by Mr. Rossi, second by Ms. Dory, roll call please.
Ms. Thompson?
Yes.
Mia Chow?
Yes.
Ms. Chun?
Yes.
Mr. Rossi?
Yes.
Ms. Starriedy?
Yes.
Mr. Lay?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Seven yeas approved.
The next position is the ELA and Literacy Specialist. Any comments or question by the members? That's great, here none, sorry. I spoke, I spoke too soon, Ms. Mon. I think everybody's having fun tonight, Ms. Mon.
Just a small point, but it, with, in the job responsibilities, it says assisting the business, the building administration, and literacy and instructional specialist, which is the same title? So it's assisting itself? Again, these are just things to clean up, you know?
I believe it's referring to the school-based positions there, we do have school-based instructional specialists as well, am I clarifying that correctly?
That's right, so we have, we have the coordinator of ELA and literacy grades K, pre-K to 12, working in the Office of Teaching and Learning. And then we have the instructional specialist and the literacy specialist, they're two separate positions. The literacy specialists are grades pre-K to four, and the instructional specialist position is grades five to eight, and those are building-based. And then this position is an ELA literacy district specialist position, grades K to
Ms. Mon, are you all set?
Next time around, if we can just.
Sure. Ms. Dory?
Thank you, Your Honor. So I'm curious with these positions, the specialist positions, are they going to be funded through ESAR?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. No, these positions are funded through the general fund. If you flip back in your packet to the cover page, every position's identified by funding source, by Ms. Turner, so you'll see them listed. So the ESAR-funded positions within this are the library and instructional technology teacher and the building-based substitute. You then have one, that's the McKinney Vento, that's a separate grant, otherwise the others are the general fund. We've tried to move recurring positions to our general fund so that we can accommodate and account for the fiscal cliff, so you'll see positions that we largely move to the general fund when we can. And otherwise here, what you're seeing with the ESAR, library and instructional techno, instructional technology teacher is a district-wide initiative that we're, we are very hopeful we'll be able to sustain, but it's within ESAR right now, because that's what's enabled us to initiate the revitalization of our library. Building-based substitutes are part of mitigating the ESAR, or the COVID-related substitute shortages, which is why that's there. So you'll see, over time, we're moving positions as they're become recurring into the general fund to mitigate the fiscal cliff. So we try as much as we can to limit, limit positions coming out of ESAR. The bulk of the positions coming out of ESAR are actually identified within the school-based budgeting through the ESAR supplements that have been provided to schools. So the school-based budgeting, school site council have ESAR supplements where they can identify positions. These are centralized positions that are funded out of the general fund. I don't know if everybody sees the cover page, I can get additional copies out to the committee if that's helpful.
Ms. Dory, you all set? Okay. No other comments or question? A motion to approve and post the position by Ms. Dory, second by Mr. Lay, roll call please.
Ms. Thompson?
Yes.
Mia Chow?
Yes.
Ms. Chun?
Yes.
Mr. Rossi?
Yes.
Ms. Starriedy?
Yes.
Mr. Lay?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Seven yeas approved.
The next position is the math specialist. Any comments or question? I'm not going to move that fast. All right, safe to say, no, no comments or question by the members? Motion to accept and approve the post by Mr. Lay, second by Ms. Mon, roll call please.
Ms. Thompson?
Yes.
Mia Chow?
Yes.
Ms. Chun?
Yes.
Mr. Rossi?
Yes.
Ms. Starriedy?
Yes.
Mr. Lay?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Seven yeas approved.
The next position is the Science and Social Studies Specialist. Any comments or question? Here none. Motion to approve and post the position by Ms. Mon, second by Ms. Thompson, roll call please.
Ms. Thompson?
Yes.
Mia Chow?
Yes.
Ms. Chun?
Yes.
Mr. Rossi?
Yes.
Ms. Starriedy?
Yes.
Mr. Lay?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Seven yeas approved.
The next position to be posted is high school assistant principal. Any comments or question? Mr. Rossi?
I guess my question is, is it one, or how many assistant principals?
Mr. Superintendent?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Again, I apologize for technical difficulties with the microphone. So this, if you recall, is the transition within the high school's plan of transitioning the previously defined dean and freshman academy director to assistant principal. The only reason this is before you is because our other assistant principal job descriptions are defined K through eight, so we have to define it as high school assistant principal, otherwise it's largely standard. You're not adding any FTE, nor any budget cost requirements. This is cost-neutral transition, one, one position to the other, which has been negotiated across with LSAA, we just need the job description, because the other is defined as K to eight.
Okay, I understand, thank you for clarifying.
Ms. Dory?
So is the plan that the people currently holding the dean title will automatically become the assistant principal? Or, because I'm still not really clear on how the chair fits with the assistant principal, like those, we, other than the presentation that we got by head of school, Mr. Fiatto, which was an excellent presentation, we really haven't had a chance to dig deep into what these plans are, and I know there's a lot more to come when you're looking at our graduation requirements and all that, but I'm just trying to figure out, is this going to be a title change for people that are currently our deans? What is the plan?
Mr. Superintendent?
Mr. Skinner?
Yes, it's a title change, so the people in the role at dean at the moment were consulted by Mr. Fiatto at the high school, and offered an opportunity, if the role were changed to assistant principal, would they accept that role? And each of them has done so. So it's a title change.
Unfortunately, a lot of the spaces that can be utilized as a library have been transformed into classroom space because the libraries have been closed for so long. So, again, moving forward with this position. And I do have to point out that qualification one, there is an era. It really, well, it's not an era so much as it should be elementary or middle, depending on the level and the school. So I do want to point that out upfront. We will shift that. It will be elementary or middle, depending on the school. But again, at this time, we've got two small schools that will share the position, and then we have 15 either elementary or middle schools that will be coming on for the fall of this year, and then hopefully the rest will be able to come on next year.
Thank you for that, and I have to tell you, I lived through the budget cuts when we lost all our libraries except for the high school because we needed that for accreditation. I don't want to ever live through that again, and we've already extended ourselves quite a bit with over 300 positions. I think it might be 330. I'm concerned. I think it might also be difficult to find people who are willing to come on for a position that very well could not be funded, not to mention my colleagues' concerns about the cost to the district and unemployment. Because we bring these people on and then we can't afford to keep them, we are going to continue to have to pay one-third of their salaries or whatever it turns out to be. Well, the cost of unemployment is going to be something, but I'm happy to hear what Ms. Turner has her hand raised.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
I actually researched it after we talked because Dr. Hall and I had met on these unemployment charges in the past, so I went and found our notes. We pay 6% on the first 7,000 paid to an employee, but just so that you guys understand, we pay 67% of the total unemployment paid by the city. So the amount fluctuates between 160 and 200,000 for the last few years on the maintenance of effort charges, but even if we looked at the 300 positions, which many of them are part-time positions, but even if we assumed one-third of the positions were going to apply for unemployment, that would still be only $42,000. So just to give you a heads up on that, I am going to confirm that with the city CFO, but it's not as significant as we think, and it's something that they're facing across the, you know, the state, because we do still have to hire people to address the issues. Now, as Ms. Martin said, we do want to know in advance what the impact would be, but just looking at it right quickly, it looks as though we're fluctuating between 50,000 already each year, so 42,000 more if we assumed all 300, 100 of the 300 left, it would be 420 dollars each. So I can confirm that and get a printout, but yes, and I looked at the maintenance of effort, like I said, and saw that the historical amount is fluctuating between 160 and 200.
Sorry, can I follow that?
Sure, absolutely.
When you say 42,000, you mean in total?
That's assuming.
42,000 for 100 layoffs?
That's assuming, yes, because you're only paying 6% of the first 7,000. We're paying insurance, not the actual, we don't pay someone's, one-third of someone's salary.
Salary.
We pay for insurance, and it's only on the first 7,000. And I'm going to like get printouts and documents that Dr. Hall and I looked at before, and I'll have it in a package for you, but I just wanted to assure you that it's not as scary as we think.
Then if I could just, I have specific questions about the actual job description. It doesn't indicate, are we looking for somebody with teaching experience, and if so, how many years of teaching experience? It seems like, in terms of salary, it says per the teacher's contract, but that very much just depends on how much experience you have as a teacher, right? So shouldn't the job description under qualifications have some guidance on what the experience level is that you're looking for?
So this position would be, it would be in the UTL. So this is a teaching position. In the past, our libraries were not staffed with teachers, and so this position, we hope to be very flexible as far as being able to not only provide supports around library skills, but really to grow the love of reading and support reading skills of our students. So we left the teaching years piece out because we really want the flexibility for principals to be able to hire a teacher that they feel is the best fit for their library, just like they would hire a classroom teacher, if that makes sense.
Ms. Thompson?
Yeah, so one thing that I just noted that I didn't see in the job description was that this person, it should be fostering and encouraging the employee of materials and techniques with a diversity and equity lens. I think it's really important that that's really spelled out, and I know obviously this is a UTL, and adding sometimes, adding something to this position does, you know, hold things up, and I think it's really important to, as again, we're trying to move this district forward, to make sure that the materials and the techniques that this person is bringing to the table are done with a diversity and equity lens. Excellent, thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Here, I just want to quickly say that it's good to see the positions of the librarian are back, and I want to commend the superintendent for working on this with me. We spoke about it over the summer. After we both heard from both the residents and the district, the staff, the teachers and so forth, it's a much-needed position in our school system, and I know this is a grant-funded position, but at least we'll have librarians hopefully for a long, long time, but hopefully this will buy some time, maybe we get other grants in the future to continue this position. You're right, Ms. Doherty, we don't ever want to be in a position that we won't have librarians again. But no other comments or questions?
Librarians. Like seriously, I just don't need them.
Absolutely. So welcome back to all the librarians. Need a motion to approve and post the position by Ms. Chun, second by Mr. Rossi. Roll call, please.
Ms. Thompson?
Yes.
Mia Chow?
Yes.
Ms. Chun?
Yes.
Mr. Rossi?
Yes.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Mr. Lay?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Seven years approved.
We've got two more positions to go. The next one is the building-based substitute teacher. Any comment or question? Here none. Need a motion to approve and post the position by Mr. Rossi, second by Ms. Doherty. Roll call, please.
Ms. Thompson?
Yes.
Mia Chow?
Yes.
Ms. Chun?
Yes.
Mr. Rossi?
Yes.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Mr. Lay?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Seven years approved.
We've got two more positions to go. The next one is the building-based substitute teacher. Any comment or question? Here none. Need a motion to approve and post the position by Mr. Rossi, second by Ms. Doherty. Roll call, please.
Ms. Thompson?
Yes.
Mia Chow?
Yes.
Ms. Chun?
Yes.
Mr. Rossi?
Yes.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Mr. Lay?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Seven years approved.
The next position is the library and instructional technology teacher. Any comments or question? Ms. Doherty?
How many positions are we talking about?
We offered the opportunity for all elementary and middle schools to open or reopen their library space for next school year. For next school year, 15, I'm sorry, 17, two small schools have the space ready to reopen as a library. We also offered the opportunity for the schools that didn't, were not able to come on for the fall because their space has been transformed into something else, that we would be able to do that for the following school year if those schools want to come on. So we offered it to everybody. Unfortunately, a lot of the spaces that can be utilized as a library have been transformed into classroom space because the libraries have been closed for so long. So, again, moving forward with this position, and I do have to point out that qualification one, there is an era. It really, well, it's not an era so much as it should be elementary or middle, depending on the level and the school. So I do want to point that out upfront. We will shift that. It will be elementary or middle, depending on the school. But again, at this time, we've got two small schools that will share the position, and then we have 15 either elementary or middle schools that will be coming on for the fall of this year, and then hopefully the rest will be able to come on next year.
Thank you for that, and I have to tell you, I lived through the budget cuts when we lost all our libraries except for the high school because we needed that for accreditation. I don't want to ever live through that again, and we've already extended ourselves quite a bit with over 300 positions. I think it might be 330. I'm concerned. I think it might also be difficult to find people who are willing to come on for a position that very well could not be funded, not to mention my colleagues' concerns about the cost to the district and unemployment. Because we bring these people on and then we can't afford to keep them, we are going to continue to have to pay one-third of their salaries or whatever it turns out to be. Well, the cost of unemployment is going to be something, but I'm happy to hear what Ms. Turner has her hand raised.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
I actually researched it after we talked because Dr. Hall and I had met on these unemployment charges in the past, so I went and found our notes. We pay 6% on the first 7,000 paid to an employee, but just so that you guys understand, we pay 67% of the total unemployment paid by the city. So the amount fluctuates between 160 and 200,000 for the last few years on the maintenance of effort charges, but even if we looked at the 300 positions, which many of them are part-time positions, but even if we assumed one-third of the positions were going to apply for unemployment, that would still be only $42,000. So just to give you a heads up on that, I am going to confirm that with the city CFO, but it's not as significant as we think, and it's something that they're facing across the, you know, the state, because we do still have to hire people to address the issues. Now, as Ms. Martin said, we do want to know in advance what the impact would be, but just looking at it right quickly, it looks as though we're fluctuating between 50,000 already each year, so 42,000 more if we assumed all 300, 100 of the 300 left, it would be 420 dollars each. So I can confirm that and get a printout, but yes, and I looked at the maintenance of effort, like I said, and saw that the historical amount is fluctuating between 160 and 200.
Sorry, can I follow that?
Sure, absolutely.
So when you say 42,000, you mean in total?
That's assuming.
42,000 for 100 layoffs?
That's assuming, yes, because you're only paying 6% of the first 7,000. We're paying insurance, not the actual, we don't pay someone's, one-third of someone's salary.
Salary.
We pay for insurance, and it's only on the first 7,000. And I'm going to like get printouts and documents that Dr. Hall and I looked at before, and I'll have it in a package for you, but I just wanted to assure you that it's not as scary as we think.
Then if I could just, I have specific questions about the actual job description. It doesn't indicate, are we looking for somebody with teaching experience, and if so, how many years of teaching experience? It seems like, in terms of salary, it says per the teacher's contract, but that very much just depends on how much experience you have as a teacher, right? So shouldn't the job description under qualifications have some guidance on what the experience level is that you're looking for?
So this position would be, it would be in the UTL. So this is a teaching position. In the past, our libraries were not staffed with teachers, and so this position, we hope to be very flexible as far as being able to not only provide supports around library skills, but really to grow the love of reading and support reading skills of our students. So we left the teaching years piece out because we really want the flexibility for principals to be able to hire a teacher that they feel is the best fit for their library, just like they would hire a classroom teacher, if that makes sense.
Ms. Thompson?
Yeah, so one thing that I just noted that I didn't see in the job description was that this person, it should be fostering and encouraging the employee of materials and techniques with a diversity and equity lens. I think it's really important that that's really spelled out, and I know obviously this is a UTL, and adding sometimes, adding something to this position does, you know, hold things up, and I think it's really important to, as again, we're trying to move this district forward, to make sure that the materials and the techniques that this person is bringing to the table are done with a diversity and equity lens. Excellent, thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Here, I just want to quickly say that it's good to see the positions of the librarian are back, and I want to commend the superintendent for working on this with me. We spoke about it over the summer. After we both heard from both the residents and the district, the staff, the teachers and so forth, it's a much-needed position in our school system, and I know this is a grant-funded position, but at least we'll have librarians hopefully for a long, long time, but hopefully this will buy some time, maybe we get other grants in the future to continue this position. You're right, Ms. Doherty, we don't ever want to be in a position that we won't have librarians again. But no other comments or questions?
Librarians. Like seriously, I just don't need them.
Absolutely. So welcome back to all the librarians. Need a motion to approve and post the position by Ms. Chun, second by Mr. Rossi. Roll call, please.
Ms. Thompson?
Yes.
Mia Chow?
Yes.
Ms. Chun?
Yes.
Mr. Rossi?
Yes.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Mr. Lay?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Seven years approved.
We've got two more positions to go. The next one is the building-based substitute teacher. Any comment or question? Here none. Need a motion to approve and post the position by Mr. Rossi, second by Ms. Doherty. Roll call, please.
Ms. Thompson?
Yes.
Mia Chow?
Yes.
Ms. Chun?
Yes.
Mr. Rossi?
Yes.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Mr. Lay?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Seven years approved.
The last position to be voted on tonight is the part-time health liaison nurse two. Any questions or comments? Here none. I know I speak, I try to put a delay as well, so Ms. Doherty?
So I think this is a great idea. I did speak with Beth Moffett, and we absolutely have need of this role. One thing that came out of my conversations around this was, it doesn't have to be a nurse
I was just wondering why there was nothing about familiarity with working with and supporting homeless and/or unhoused individuals and families? I was just curious why that was not in there. And I think that that is really important. I've worked with the homeless population, with the unhoused population. I think it's a really specific skill set. So that's just something that I was thinking about.
Mr. Superintendent?
Yes, thank you, Ms. Phillips.
Yes. So it's funded by the McKinley-Vento office. It was recommended by DESI. It really is an operational position to help families get past the hurdle of immunizations. So I think, in thinking, Ms. Doherty, about what you recommended, but also hearing, you know, the other recommendations, we would work closely with the Health Department. Ideally, I think our top candidate would be the licensed nurse. But ultimately, it really is an operational position to get families past the hurdle of getting into a school where they would then be handed off to the school nurse for all of the additional support. So, but because it is funded through McKinley-Vento, it is important for everyone to understand, you know, what our families who are experiencing homelessness, like what they're up against. But the nurse would not necessarily be identifying families for McKinley-Vento. But because many of our families who we identify for McKinley-Vento may be missing that, you know, the immunizations they need, they can still go directly into school if they're McKinley-Vento. So that's like the one group that can bypass, you know, the immunization policy. I believe per federal law. However, if we do have this position there, we can take care of it right away. So we don't have to, like, really use that clause to get them right into school if we have someone right there.
Ms. Thompson, are you all... Do you have any more questions?
Yep, I'm all set. Thank you.
Okay. Any other comments or questions? Hyeong-nan? Need a motion to approve and post the position by Ms. Doherty, second by Mr. Lee. Roll call, please.
Ms. Thompson?
Yes.
Mayor Chow?
Yes.
Ms. Chun?
Yes.
Mr. Rossi?
Yes.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Mr. Lee?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Seven yeas approved.
Well, congratulations. Complete that portion of the business, posting all those positions. We now go to five new business, 5.1. Consideration of update to the school committee rules policy, BEDB-E, to include mayor's business on regular meeting agendas. I believe this speaks for itself. But just briefly, just to include a section called the mayor's portion of it at the beginning of agenda, to include most of the time is special events, for example, like citation, presentation, any recognition that we'd need to do for the district. Just have a little bit more flexibility that we can take up all these issues up in the beginning of the meeting. Any comments or questions? Hyeong-nan? Motion to approve by Ms. Doherty, second by Mr. Lee. Roll call, please.
Ms. Thompson?
Yes.
Mayor Chow?
Yes.
Ms. Chun?
Yes.
Mr. Rossi?
Yes.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Mr. Lee?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Seven yeas approved.